We call the Metropolis City Council's order Monday, June tenth, two thousand and thirteen. Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Somebody's hot.
Somebody's really hot over here in the corner. One of us too. It might be mine, but one of us too is really there.
What's the number on your back yours?
David's too, three.
Wow.
Let me back up here a little. It's not fresh air.
It's just this side of the table, is that what you're saying?
Just this side of the table, I guess.
Aren't you a hot man there?
No, we're all hot.
Don't turn down too much beer.
Okay, I'm not.
I'm still here.
Can he hear?
Yeah. Anybody back there deaf yet? I'm the only one.
Don't get me laughing while I do this.
We need a motion to approve the minutes of five twenty-eight thirteen.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel. Thank you.
Please stand or the pledge of allegiance will remain standing for prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you've bestowed on each and every one. We pray that you will be with the ones there, Heavenly Father, in our community that have loved ones there, Heavenly Father, that are sick. Not only be with the sick, but be with the caregivers. Be with us as this meeting goes forward to Heavenly Father, that each decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our armed service personnel, dear Heavenly Father. Guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families, we ask in our precious name. First item on the agenda, citizen request. None listed.
Got some packs of information coming out to you. Just wanted to just take a couple of minutes to kind of talk about a little bit of river development. We hear a lot about riverfront development here in the city of Metropolis. And we'd like to kind of talk about, you know, we have a huge body of water out here that we could really use to our advantage here in the city of Metropolis. And it'd also go very well with our lighthouse theme, you know, with the lighthouse, Hope Lighthouse been built. And I think we probably it would be a good idea to maybe focus on river development, not so much the riverfront developments. The first pack that I've handed out to you, being in the news business, I get a lot of messages from people, you know, little items of interest, you know, tips, say, hey, you know, take a look at this. And somebody sent me this information about this blog called the Red Chair Road Trip. And they were here back in March, I believe it was. And the Red Chair Road Trip blog is a very, very popular blog. I mean, he has thousands of people that watch it. And he snapped a picture of our riverfront and made a comment on there about that when they took their cameras out for a walk along the Ohio River, they discovered an overgrown field, a gazebo, and a quarter mile of bare beach littered with garbed chains and floats. So I just wanted to kind of bring that all to your attention. You know, we have a gentleman out there who has got this big travel blog that kind of posted this very uncomplimentary picture of our riverfront. And so, you know, I was just wondering, you know, maybe we need to possibly look at cleaning up the riverfront so that it doesn't look so bad, as you can see that in the picture there. The other thing is, there is a item of tourism that we're kind of missing out on here in Metropolis. And I discovered this last year. This company, the Columbus Foundation, has a couple Columbus replica boats that come by here every year to go to Owensboro, Kentucky. And they pass right by here in August to go to Owensboro, Kentucky. So I contacted the headquarters of this company and just kind of asked them, hey, what could we do to get Metropolis put on y'all's itinerary? And they told us that in order for us to be put on a travel itinerary, that we need to have a two hundred and fifty feet of dock space that they would be able to tie their hooks up on. If we would be able to do that, they would be more than happy to add us to their itinerary. And as currently, we do not have a docking facility here in Metropolis. So I was wanting to suggest that we may want to take a serious look at this and maybe think about building a floating public dock at the Park on River. These two Columbus Foundation boats are replicas of the ship on which Columbus sailed across the Atlantic on its three voyages of discovery to the New World beginning in fourteen ninety-two. These boats were built completely by hand and without the use of power tools. There's a huge draw for these boats. As they travel around the country, they bring thousands of people by the busloads to come check out these boats. And they travel in a pair, basically, you know, kind of a new and enhanced sailing museum, if you will, for the purpose of educating the public and schoolchildren on the caravan, which is a portage the portage ship that was used by Columbus and many early explorers to discover the world. Typically, when they dock, they stay in for about a week. The tours are walk aboard, self-guided tours, very reasonably priced, usually about eight dollars for adults, seven dollars for seniors, and six dollars for students. And in that pack that I gave you, there's a picture of both of those boats. They're really sharp-looking boats, I mean, they're really neat. And there is a very huge amount of benches to this, and there's also an itinerary so you can see just where they travel. That being said, if we could get a floating dock built here in Metropolis, it would really increase our tourist draw. People could sit on the dock, you know, maybe do some fishing, you know, things like that, you know, kind of watch the barges go by, you know, things of that nature. And up north, there is restaurants, like up around Ohio. I think they even have some like, you know, like down around Louisiana or whatever, where we, they have restaurants that actually sit on the river, kind of similar to the casino. And I was thinking, you know, maybe a good idea would be to have a floating restaurant down by where we're going to build the lighthouse, and maybe tie it in the lighthouse where they would be willing to maybe give a percentage of their proceeds to the Hope Light Foundation. And how would that help us? That would make us unique from Paducah. I mean, we want to try to be as unique as possible from Paducah. We would have something that they would not have. Paducah doesn't currently have a floating dock. So it would be the ultimate choice in this area that would have something like that. So just some things I just wanted to bring, you know, let you all know about, make some suggestions, think it over, you know, talk it over, and maybe think about doing that. I think would really help out our tourism draw here in Metropolis.
I can address a little bit of that in the picture. I don't know if you realize what them floating
Chains and floats.
Chains and floats, they have to be on there. That's actually where they tie the barges up to.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, not defending anything, but there's a difference in a Florida ocean in the Ohio River that jumps six to nine foot every fourteen days and covers up, you know, everything brings the debris in. I agree, you know, when it dries up enough, these logs and things like that should be taken out of there. But the way it is now, in the spring of the year and the fall of the year, you take them out today and they're back tomorrow. So, and you can't get down there and work because of the mud and stuff like that. But the balls and the chains have a purpose down there, and that is actually leased property to United Barge Company or Emgram. And those have to be there. So, you know, they don't look very pittery, I agree, but they gotta be there. Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I can address this picture here. This is the area to the east of the boat ramp at Fort Massacre, DNR's Fort Massacre. And what happened was when the floods came in, this broke free. This is a buoy or locker thing. We literally, Keith Davis and I literally saw it floating there. And when it went down, when the water went down, we went over by it because we thought we could push it with the expedition back into the water. But the thing was way too heavy and the ground was too soft. But this stuff, the sun's been moved.
Yes.
The DNR had it taken care of because the Corps wanted it, that thing back because I guess it's pretty expensive.
But a lot, I mean, the floating barge, it's been discussed and stuff like that. There's a lot of things like that that could be, but it makes it much harder on a river than it does a, you know, something that has a little bit more stable fluctuation and stuff like that. Those are all good ideas and things like that.
I mean, would it be feasible to get a floating dock built to that, to those measurements, like maybe near Fort Massacre?
Well, that would be a DNR thing, and I mean, the city of Metropolis certainly can't go out and DNR property and build anything. But DNR might, you know, they control all that area there. We control twenty-five hundred feet here from the United Barge line. But like, right now, that's leased. All that riverfront is actually leased to United, or Emgram Barge Company. You go on down a little bit further, there's another three hundred foot, which is privately leased. All that property on the riverfront is leased. I mean, you just, you just can't go down there and pick you out a homestead and start building or something like that. It's, I mean, it's, I wish it was as easy as that.
We're just missing out on a great tourist opportunity if you got that floating dock. And these boats come by here over here on their way to Owensboro.
Yeah, they actually dock in Paducah, I do know that. But, you know, it is, it's an idea if you had a place to do it with, you know. Anyway, anything else on, is anyone else on the citizen report? All right, moving on. First item, motion to accept estimate for repairs from Trix Utilities in the amount of five thousand eight twenty-five thirty for the light department, that is for a digger truck. Moved by Mr. McManus. And second by Mr. Barfield.
Yes.
Discussion, call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept quote from CMI Parts in the amount of two thousand twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for repairs to the street sweep for the street department. Moved by Mr. Carroll. And second by Mr. McManus. Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept request for final installment from FY thirteen Metropolis Tourism Marketing Budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Mizel. Second by Mr. Midnight. For the Superman Celebration, they, I've heard several different. I've actually heard him say, you know, in past years that they estimated we had thirty, thirty-five thousand people. Well, I grant you, if we had, if we've ever had thirty thousand people, we exceeded that by many thousands of people. It was the biggest Thursday I've seen. It was the biggest Friday I've seen, and Saturday was unreal. And even Sunday at twelve o'clock after church, it was almost like a normal Friday. There was that many people. The only thing that really did suffer was the car show. I mean, they took a beating out there because of that prediction of rain. And people just don't get those automobiles out. And then when it did start raining, they, they got out of there pretty fast. So they did not have a good session, nor did they have a good time. I know they didn't. But, yes, we, there was many, 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 many people from probably every state in the United States. There might have been one or two exceptions, not very many. And several foreign countries, I know there were people here from Australia, England, Russia, Japan, Iran, New Zealand, so. I think it was a very successful turnout there. And I did talk to many of the vendors. They all, some of them actually booked their places for next year already. Several people that weren't here this year have called and booked for next year. And I actually talked to several of our local people that actually had businesses up there. And both of them that I talked to said that it was the best week that they had had ever during the Superman Celebration. So I think everything went well, the leash department had very little. I do know the carnival had a record turnout. So I do think it was a very successful event. We do need a motion, we do have a second, we need to call roll please. That's on the for the tourism. We need, you didn't get a motion on that.
Right, I gotta go.
Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept disbursement of funds in the amount of three thousand dollars for the Miss Metropolis Scholarship Program, which is, comes out of the educational scholarship thing, and it is budgeted.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
The Venus World Record thing was not broke by the city. It was upped about a hundred people from the first record we had. I think it was like a hundred and sixty-eight people in suits. This time it was two sixty-eight. And the way we understand it, I don't, you know, I didn't, I see, I didn't see documentation of that. But actually, the record that was broken in Chicago actually was put on, I believe, by Sears Company. They actually furnished the suits to employees and paid them to put them on, you know, during work hours. So that would be kind of like us, as the largest employer in the city of Metropolis of Harris, saying, we're going to buy everybody that works for us a Superman suit, and you put it up and you'll take your picture during working hours. So, believe me, if you wasn't there, there was a lot of Superman suits. I don't know what the oldest was, but the youngest was three months. So, and there was a lot of people, and they all had a good time. And we've got several emails and stuff like that, that people that didn't get to come this year, they're bringing their suits back, and they bought suits, and they're looking forward to next year, so. And there's still a few people milling around and stuff like that, you know, that's still here, so. It was, I think, a very successful, and the people uptown, the city, the city workers did the grid job, you know, they was, they did all their stuff on Wednesday night. It was through about five, eight o'clock, seven thirty. And we came in this morning at five and put everything back together and picked the streets up, up with paper and litter, and run the street sweeper. And maybe other than isolated, something up there, you can not tell whether there was anything up there, so that's a good thing. Next item, corporate council report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first, these three items that I have on here represent ordinances that we talked about, but we've not actually presented at an ordinance committee. They represent issues that people have brought to us. The first one is an ordinance that would prohibit dogs and animals from being on the playgrounds or the playing fields. We've got a number of complaints this year about people having walked their dogs and run their dogs out into baseball diamonds and the soccer fields and stuff, and of course, not picking up after them. And so we've had a number of parents complaining about kids coming in with all that stuff. And it's put a real damper on teaching them to slide, too. But the, but anyway, I suspect you'll want to send all these back, but we, I did want you to have them in front of you. We didn't have them last week. I actually had that one drafted, just forgot to hand it out, but we haven't had them. The second one, back when we were talking about the mowing and we were talking about maintenance and other issues, the state several years ago amended the law on competitive bidding and raised the threshold from ten thousand to twenty thousand. But the city just never followed suit. And I know that at a couple of committee meetings, Sarah, you mentioned, well, maybe we ought to just get in line with what the state law says. And so that's all that would do, is that would raise the competitive bidding threshold from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars. And that probably would help quite a bit because there are a lot, as you can see tonight, there's some common maintenance things that run, it'd take a whole lot to get several thousand dollars involved.
Mr. Bagel, is this, as far as the competitive bidding, it's going to raise it from ten thousand to twenty thousand? Okay, does that mean, does that mean it has to be twenty thousand in order for them to bid? I don't quite understand, explain it.
You could elect to bid five hundred dollars.
You could always elect to bid something if you want to, okay? But what it does is it says, anything over twenty thousand, you shall bid, okay? Unless two-thirds of the council decide not to. You could also spend a million dollars and not bid it, simply if two-thirds of the council voted for it.
So in other words, if we had something that cost fifteen thousand, we wouldn't have to bid it?
You wouldn't by law have to bid it, no.
But we could if we chose to.
Anything.
We can always elect to do that. That would be up to us, but you're not mandated to.
Okay. But, okay, it kind of goes along with the next one, the labor requirement. Okay, are we doing the same thing there as far as, we're not going through the Egyptian building?
No, not at all, not at all. Right now, you have an ordinance that says, any public work that you expect to cost more than fifty thousand dollars, you will require the contractor to sign a project labor agreement. Now, it was, it was suggested to you some time ago that you consider raising that threshold. So that public works less than fifty thousand, you don't. So if you raised it to seventy-five, or you raised it to a hundred, then small jobs that were less, you still bid them. Bidding and public, and project labor agreements have nothing to do with each other, okay? You still bid them, you still bond them, you still require prevailing wage on all of them. All that's required from dollar one, okay? Project labor agreements are for your larger projects, the, things like the, well, the sewer separation we're doing primarily. The bathhouse we'll do in the fall, things like that. Up to now, you've had that threshold at fifty thousand dollars before you made those kick in. It was, you were asked at one meeting, could you consider raising that? So I drafted you an amendment, you can plug whatever number you want to in there when you go back to committee. That's what that amounts to, but it has nothing to do with bidding.
Basically, the procedure will be remain the same, we'll just move it to a hundred thousand.
You're just changing the dollars.
A hundred thousand is not very much.
It's not, we found out even from, you know, gosh, that one time, I think we were working on, we were coming close up here on sidewalk work one time, you know, it just didn't, it was really.
Well, that's just like the building they just put up at Fire Station.
Yeah, and Mr. Reed had to sign a project labor agreement, and it was just barely over the fifty thousand. And that's a small project for a pole barn, it seemed like a lot to do.
This will help that, and that, that hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I mean.
That's not a lot either, really.
That's up to the committee.
But it's up to you, because you can set whatever you want, it's not a lot.
But it's twice as much as it was. I just wanted to clarify.
A hundred thousand is what S I U uses, by the way, in dark stuff.
Okay, thanks a lot. It will help.
It's all in.
It's cheaply, in a hurry. Committee reports. Ordinance committee.
Yes, we have a couple of items here, both of them will be first readings on the night. The first will be a first reading on an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter seventy-two, on the parking schedules of the code of Metropolis. On the second item, the first reading will be on ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter ninety-seven, on license and inoperable motor vehicles of the code of Metropolis. And that's all there is for the first reading.
First reading, okay. And we will be bringing all these as a first reading back to Mr. Daughtry's ordinance committee in the future.
Sure. Thank you.
Next item is department heads. Chief Massey. Oh, I'm sorry. You better do that, Trish will have to say. She would have, she'd have a heart attack if it wasn't for her. I apologize. Next committee.
All right, Mayor, yes, we had a meeting of June fourth, and out of this, we have two recommendations written for the full council. I will make a motion, both of these. I will make a motion to accept funding the pension deficit in the tax levy amount of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Motion made and second. Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
And the second one, I will make a motion to accept the funding of fire pensions for the deficit in the tax levy in the amount of fifty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Sir. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Carroll. Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry,
Yes.
McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
I don't know, she'll go.
I think I need those pills in there.
That'll take the place of calling the Mac back to you. All right. Now then, we'll get back to the full schedule. Department heads, Chief Massey.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Frank.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Ms. Christie. Old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. No, I can't find anything.
Okay, one thing, Mayor, I felt to, tomorrow there'll be a tourism, a conversation on tourism, it'll be big, eleven o'clock here in the chamber.
All right. Financial report, payroll of, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. Moved by Mr. McManus and second by Mr. Mizel.
There we go.
Your time, next item.
Next item.
Barfield, Brown, no one's sounding good, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next item, payment miscellaneous bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carroll, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have a need for a closed session. We do have a need for a closed session for personnel and collective bargaining. And sale, sales lease or exchange of real estate. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.